...council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
MacIver. Shower.
Here.
Seifert. Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is something we add to the city council in order to allow the audience to address the council on any items. They don't have to be items on the agenda this evening, but if you would like to take three minutes or less to discuss anything, please come forward and approach the microphone. Then let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the approval of minutes of May 6th. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marquess, second by Alderman Kenny. We did make some corrections to the minutes. They were so reflected. Any other questions or comments from the council? Then the roll, please.
Marquess.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications to share with the council? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, or two weeks ago before it was sworn in this section in the meeting was at that proportion of meeting, that morning I received communication from Emily Polasek. She'd contacted, and I copied Alderman Shower on it. She had an issue with her water box in front of her home on Stratford Place. Sent it over to Mr. Gombeck, took care of it. And last week I received a communication from Christopher Bysdick, who's a Boy Scout at Downers Grove South High School, going for his Eagle for a merit badge. And we had a meeting with Mr. Brian Vanna. Nerves.
John never forgot my name.
Did I say size 20 shoe? It's a size 25 shoe.
Just got bigger, okay.
So, but we had a nice meeting Friday, Brian and Christopher and myself, about a government issue for his merit badge. That's all I got. Thank you.
And please, if you do have more communications with him when the time comes, let him know that the city does honor Eagle Scouts with proclamations here at City Hall.
Will do, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other communications to share? Let's move on to the mayor's report, and we have the Darien Chamber of Commerce CEO, Claire Bon Giovanni.
Good evening. Congratulations to all Darien Race participants and winners, including Mayor Kathleen Weaver, who took first place in her age group.
Don't tell, don't say the age group, okay?
Everyone is invited to open the virtual race bag. Please visit darienchamber.com. A little box will pop up, and all you need to do is put your first name, your last name, in the email address, and you can open the offer. Now, we are offering this to everyone in the community, not only the runners. All race participants who registered after May 16th will receive their virtual race bag via email by Wednesday. Thank you to Darien VFW Post 2838, Nick Darien, James Dongara, Dennis Balsegum, Matt Goodwin, and the 2013 Citizen of the Year Kathy Marquess for stating the pledge. Thank you to Alex Bahavaolis for singing the beautiful National Anthem. He did a great job. We are very excited tonight to announce that Lay School had the most race participants, and the Darien Chamber will be awarding Lay School once again $1,000. Also this year, in second place, we have Eisenhower Junior High, who will receive 500, and Concord, who will receive 500. So I called them to notify them today, and Marty Casey was so excited. He's like, "Are you gonna present a check to me before I leave?" So I'm gonna work on that. We can maybe get him in the next meeting before he leaves. Unfortunately, no youth organization qualified this year, but we're hoping next year, would sign me up, that people are getting better with putting the schools in, that they'll start putting the youth organizations in as well. We would like to thank all of our sponsors, our presenting sponsor, Vane Center University Medicine Cardiology, Dr. Tom DiMetropolis. Our water station sponsors, BMO Harris, Carmelite Carefree Village, Edward Jones, Tim Warner, and Meatheads. Our T-shirt sponsor, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, Concentra, Harry's Sweatshop, Keyboard Touch, McDonald's, Smile Studio 87, and Republic Bank. Our onsite marketing, Athletico, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, The Goddard School, Higher Health Chiropractic, and Jet's Pizza. Our post-race sponsor, Home Run In, and State Bank of Countryside. Our gear check sponsor, which was a hit this year, was Patio Restaurant. Our virtual race bag sponsors, if you go and open the bag, you'll see offers from Card Frenzy, Chestnut Court Merchants Association, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, Edward Jones, Tim Warner, The Goddard School, Harry's Sweatshop, Jet's Pizza, King Car Wash, The Keyboard Touch, Zazzo's Pizza and Catering, and Vane Center at University Medicine Cardiology. A heartfelt thank you to our partners, the City of Darien, Darien Park District, Indian Prairie Public Library, BMO Harris Bank, Carmelite Carefree Village, Claritin Chiropractic, Darien Lions Club, Darien Neighbors Magazine, DuPage County Amateur Radio, DuPage Star Technology, Exit Real Estate Partners, Firefly Photography by Cherie, Home Run In, Rose Landscaping Design, Export Fitness. A special thanks to community volunteers, Dan Hardman and Steve Heineck. There is a link for everyone to view the pictures that the photographer took yesterday. You can find that link at www.facebook.com/fireflyphotographybycherie. She will have all the pictures. She said she took like a thousand pictures of all the runners and everything, so she will have the link up shortly. Some upcoming events, the Wilton School of Cake Decorating will celebrate their grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony on Saturday, June 8th at 9:30 a.m. The Wilton School of Cake Decorating is located at 7511 Lamont Road in Darien in the Chestnut Court Shopping Center. On June 27th, the Darien Chamber of Commerce will be kicking off our Shop Local, Shop Darien campaign with a party at Home Run In Pizza. All Darien businesses are invited to attend. Chamber members will receive a special Shop Local decal to proudly display at their business. At this time, we have a couple guests I would like to introduce, and I would like to start with John Sedgeall from Caldwell Corn and Sedgeall.
Hi, my name is John Sedgeall, and I am the president of Caldwell Corn and Sedgeall. A full-service CPA firm, we're located in Darien at 7900 South Cass Avenue. We are a full-service CPA firm, offering audits, business plan preparation, small business accounting, and controllership services. Our ideal customer is small business, not-for-profits, medical services. The firm, we provide outstanding service to our clients because of our dedication to three principles that we've sought to made strong. One is professionalism, responsiveness, and quality. Professionalism, our firm is one of the leading firms in the area. By combining our expertise, experience, and energy of our staff, each client receives close personal and professional attention. Our high standards, service, and specialized staff spell the difference between our outstanding performance and other firms. We make sure that every client is served by the expertise of our whole firm. Our firm is responsive. Companies who choose our firm rely on competent advice and fast, accurate personnel. We provide total financial services to individuals, large and small, businesses, and other agencies. To see our listing of our services, please take a moment on our services page, which Because we get new business from people who know us best, client referrals have fueled our growth in recent years. Through hard work, we have earned the respect of the business and financial communities. This respect illustrates our diverse talents, dedication, and ability to respond quickly. Our accounting firm is also known for the quality of its service. Our firm's reputation reflects the high standards we demand of ourselves. Our primary goal as a trusted advisor is to be available to provide insightful advice to enable our clients to make informed financial decisions. We do not accept anything less from ourselves, and that is what we deliver to you. We feel it's extremely important to continually professionally educate ourselves to improve our technical expertise, financial knowledge, and service to our clients. We'll answer all your questions as they impact both your tax and financial situations, and we welcome you to contact us at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
John is also on our executive committee and our board. He is our treasurer, and he does a phenomenal job, so we're very happy to have him part of our chamber. Next up, I have Bob and Rob Esposito from Culvers. They are gonna talk about an event that they're hosting.
Good evening, I'm Rob Esposito, one of the owners of Culvers here in Darien. I'm here tonight to talk as little about Culvers as I can. Tomorrow, we're having a fundraiser for Honor Flight Chicago. Honor Flight Chicago is an organization that is dedicated to flying World War II veterans to Washington DC for a day of honor and reflection at their war memorials. They do so free of charge, and we're very excited to be hosting this fundraiser for them tomorrow. In fact, 60 Culvers locations in the Chicago area will be donating 10% to Honor Flight Chicago. I had the privilege of attending the welcome home ceremony at Midway Airport this past Tuesday with members of the Darien VFW, and it is one of the most remarkable events and organizations that we've ever partnered with. So our goal at Culvers, besides raising money, is to raise awareness. There are 20,000 World War II veterans in the Chicago area that have not been on the flight, and they're afraid that within four to five years, we will have lost them and lost that opportunity to show them our respect. So our goal is to get the word out that if you know someone in your family, a friend, who has not yet been on the flight, they can go to honorflightchicago.org, fill out the application, they can stop by their local Culvers and pick up an application. And as I mentioned, tomorrow, May 21st, we will be donating 10% back to Honor Flight Chicago. So thank you for your time, and we hope to see you tomorrow for some butter burgers and frozen custard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claire. Under the mayor's report, I'd like to let the viewing audience and those in the audience here tonight know that the city council of Darien received a proposal from a major drugstore chain to purchase the property that we have on the east side of Cass Avenue between 75th and Plainfield Road, and the council has chosen not to accept that offer. So we just wanted to inform residents about that offer, and that we continue to look at that property and market it. So, thank you very much. Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
Just one item, Madam Mayor. The Darien City offices will be closed on Monday, May 27th, in honor of Memorial Day.
Thank you. City Administrator's report?
I have no report, Mayor, but I'd be happy to answer any questions of the council.
Any questions for the administrator? Let's move on to Department head information and questions. Any council members, are any of you making presentations this evening?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Chief, did you have one?
Good evening, council members, Mayor. Have a brief presentation, go over a couple of things in our monthly newsletter. One of the things that I wanted to touch base on is last, in 2012, I had a meeting, Mr. Vanna and myself had a meeting with former Mayor Carmen Soldado, and during that meeting, we discussed one of his projects, the National Alliance for Mental Illness, NAMI, specifically NAMI DuPage. And at that time, he talked about some of the concerns of the organization and asked if I thought it was a good idea that we got police officers involved in recognition of the concerns. And I did think it was a good idea, and so I took that idea to the DuPage County Chiefs' Association. The chairman at that time, Brad Bloom, agreed that it was a good idea, and we were able to put them on the, excuse me, on the next meeting agenda. As a result of that meeting, they offered training to the DuPage County Chiefs. All of the chiefs agreed that it was a good idea, and back in April of this year, we, 150 DuPage County officers were trained by NAMI on recognition. And this is a really critical issue, because there have been any number of occasions where police officers have mistaken a person in need of mental care for an offender and acted inappropriately. I think jurisdiction out south recently was involved in a shooting with an individual who was actually in need of mental treatment. So it's really a great idea, so we were able to get that done. But in terms of community awareness, one of the things I want to bring up is, in January 1st of 2013, House Bill 1554 was passed, and it's an amendment to the Liquor Control Act of 1934. And what it basically does is it sets some really stringent rules and regulations on underage drinking. And some of the provisions of that House bill are as follows. First off, the CDC reports there 4,700 traffic crashes, traffic crash fatalities. 11% of those, or 500 or so, involve underage drinkers. And so that's a formidable number each year of young people who are fatally injured in alcohol-related traffic crashes. Some of the provisions are as follows. Person under the age of 18 who knowingly allows the consumption of alcohol by minor is guilty of a Class A misdemeanor. Class A misdemeanor is punishable by a fine of 500 to $2,500. Now, that fine increases, that penalty increases exponentially if that drinking that was allowed by that 18-year-old or above person, or that adult, results in death or great bodily harm. In that regard, that changes to a Class IV felony. A Class IV felony carries a penalty of one to three years and a potential for a $25,000 fine. So the adult additionally who provides that alcohol or who allows that drinking could also be held civilly liable. So in other words, if, in addition to the criminal punishment, in the event that someone sues, whether it's the death of the person who was drinking or another death of great bodily harm, that individual who allowed that can also be sued civilly. Possession or consumption of an alcoholic beverage by any individual under 21 may result in a number of sanctions. Arrest, court supervision, court mandated drug or alcohol treatment. Probably most telling is the fact that the suspension of driving privileges. The first offense is a three-month suspension. Now, transportation of alcohol carries an even stiffer penalty. The first offense for transportation carries a 12-month suspension of the driver's license. A second or subsequent conviction carries a minimum one-year suspension of the driver's license and revocation of the vehicle registration. So ostensibly, your kid's driving under the influence of alcohol, second time, the driver's license can be revoked, and the vehicle's registration can be revoked. So he or she is thereby unable to register that vehicle again. So those are some pretty formidable problems with drinking. And so what we want to do is, we want to strongly encourage our residents, as our children come home from high school, college, and what have you, as the summer approaches, we want to encourage our residents to be vigilant about underage drinking. And certainly, the establishments who might sell or serve an underage individual runs the risk of losing their license and criminal penalties as well. So that's something that we really want to take into consideration. Also have some crime tips, just to go over briefly. We continue to have a problem with burglaries to motor vehicles. It's down a little bit so far this month, but this is the time of the year where it tends to increase. So we want to ask everybody to make sure that you remove valuables from visible locations in your vehicles. If you have a GPS unit, disconnect it and put it in the glove box or the trunk before you get to your destination. Always lock your vehicle. Don't find yourself with your vehicle remote and your personal identifiers in an unlocked vehicle, because if somebody breaks in, now they not only know where you live, but they have access to your residence through your remote. When vacationing, notify the police. We can put your house on special attention. In addition to that, cancel or suspend deliveries that may underscore the fact that you aren't home. Change your voicemail message. "Hey, we're just running out to the store, be back in 10 minutes, call you when we get back," things like that. Anything that we can do to kind of dissuade or throw off the bad guys. Maintain light, your lights in the house when you're gone on programmable timers. That's always a good one, if your lights are going on and off intermittently without a specific pattern. When using your ATM, I missed one. In this age of identity theft, every household should have a shredder. A shredder considerably large enough to accommodate shredding all of your documents that contain any pertinent information, because it only takes a very little bit of information to basically steal your entire life. When using your ATM, shield your PIN entry. I've seen people step back as though they're trying to say, "Hey, give me some assistance stealing your identity." So shield your PIN entry when you're doing it. Should you go to an ATM and there seems to be any trouble with the insertion slot, you may be a victim of phishing there, where a device has been placed into the slot that will read your card number and your PIN. So if there's any difficulty changing, go to a different machine. Don't use unsecured Wi-Fi. Most folks don't know that if you're using an unsecured Wi-Fi, whatever you're doing, whatever transaction you have, your computer is an open book at that point. So don't use an unsecured Wi-Fi.
Chief, are you referring to if you go to, you know, they call them internet cafes?
Hotspots.
Yeah. Is that what you're talking about, unprotected?
Unless you're doing something that's very generic or innocuous, I would never shop from the internet where I was entering credit card numbers or other pertinent personal information from an unsecured Wi-Fi. That doesn't require a...
That's an unsecured location, okay.
An access code to get on the Wi-Fi. Most hotels, the larger chains, you have to have an access code to get on the Wi-Fi, so you're fairly safe there. But without the access code, your computer's like an open book.
Okay.
Don't shop on an internet site that doesn't have a lock at the top of the toolbar. When you observe suspicious activity or suspicious people, don't assume that someone else is gonna make that call. Please make the call. As importantly, use 911. 911 is there for us to respond to. We thrive on 911 calls, so please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call 911. Lastly, but not least, we've experienced an uptick in a practice called phishing. And what that involves is someone will call your home or your cellphone and claim that your credit card or debit card has been compromised, and they will ask you for an automated prompt to tell them if you want security to take a look into it, and then they will ask you for your card number. Well, the fact is, if it's your legitimate credit card company or debit card company, they already have your credit card number, so don't give it to them. If you find yourself in that circumstance, hang up immediately and have no further contact. Contact your bank. It's one of the newer ways. For every blessing, there's a curse, and this is a technology blessing and a curse at the same time. So we can overcome most of what we've talked about tonight through simple vigilance, and it's gonna require vigilance from us all. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Chief?
Just to follow up, Chief, on the last part, the phishing. How does that work? Does it come in waves to a community? Because I know this past weekend, you know, we had a number of calls, I had a number of calls about this, which in turn I said to call 911. But it just seems like we had a lot of residents go experience that this weekend as opposed to maybe at any other time.
Criminals are like, kind of like Hollywood. If they find an area where something seems to work, they hone in on it. And so it could be that they've had some success in this area some kind of way with unsuspecting residents, or it could be that somebody hacked into one of the local systems, one of the banking systems, and hadn't been discovered yet. So there's a lot of ways it could happen, but to answer your question, it usually does come in waves.
I'm sorry. One more, Chief. If you could also just take a minute to talk again about Community Park. I know this past, last week, we put another article in there about Direct Connect, possibly the week before. Explain what we're doing again, and you started that last year with, obviously, huge success. So why don't you just take a minute to talk about that?
Last year, we experienced a rash of some criminal and some nuisance behavior at Community Park. And when we talked about it with the command staff in the department, they said, "Well, this is something that occurs every year." And so what we did is, we took a look at it and came up with a strategy to address it. And so we have an officer basically assigned to the park. And this is critical, based on my background, because ultimately what happens is parks become icons for community, and if you can't control a park as a law enforcement agency, then you're not likely to be able to control anything else. And losing a park to the criminal element, no matter how mild it is, becomes a faith loser. The public fast loses faith in the police departments and the city's ability to protect it. And so ultimately, what you have is a park that, where we yielded ground to people who aren't entitled to it, people who would do, commit negative acts and criminal acts in the park. And so what my thought was, and what it remains, is that making sure that the park is safe for the hard-working decent families who'd like to be there is a critical component of what we do and how we preserve the values and the crime-free nature of Darien as a continuum. And so we've repeated that behavior again this year in order to replicate what we accomplished last year, so that Darien continues, the Darien Community Park continues to be the safe place for families and kids. And as part of my daytime patrol procedures, and myself and the detective sergeant happened to meet over there, we're constantly checking it to make sure that the people who do go there have positive intent. And it's something that we intend fully to continue to do, and we'd like the support of not only the elected officials in the Park District, but the residents as well. And I've been in communication with Stephanie Kragong, and she's fully aware and fully committed to the process that we've engaged in there, because in her own words, she says that a lot of families have returned to the park, and most of the people feel safe there. I was in a meeting today with one of our residents, Mr. Tischler, and he talked about speaking to the residents close by the park, and they all feel a lot better with the presence there. I think that in that regard, it accomplishes the goal, because one of the cornerstones of community policing and making a neighborhood safe is if our consuming public feels safe, then they are safe. If, no matter how good we are at policing, if the community doesn't feel safe, then it's a bad fit. So if we can make sure that that sense of safety is very real, then we're doing our jobs. There's always room for improvement, though, so.
One of the things that Chief did last year, because, you know, obviously with a number of different officers that would, you know, be at the park, created a letter that they could actually hand out to the families and people at the park. So there was a unified message being distributed, and one of the things we learned last year, some residents came to a meeting, because while we were giving the letter to the people visiting the park, we hadn't really talked to the neighbors adjacent. So this year, the chief had our community service officer, Sarah Falco, go out and actually hand-deliver letters around the perimeter. And I know a lot of the residents, it really helped get the information, because, you know, doing that new last year, there were some questions we had early on, like, "Whoa, what's happening there? Is there an additional problem?" So I think the letter, handing it to the neighborhood, also helped gain that information.
Well, the evidence is there. You see children and families routinely there, working in the playground equipment, so it's been very successful.
And we feel a little concerned that maybe that the basketball court should be taken down, and Stephanie's for sure dealing with that. But one of the things that we have to be very, again vigilance is my watchword, vigilant about, is that if we start taking down something like basketball courts, there are a lot of kids who aren't there for criminal behavior, who play, who use the basketball courts. And if we start taking the basketball nets down, then what we've done is, we've sent a terrible message to number one, the young people, because we've denied them the access to something that they use for positive purposes. We've told them that we can't control the park, and we've given, again, yielded ground that we shouldn't be yielding, and so.
I think, Chief, that was an email or a call into Stephanie...
Yes.
Where a resident made that suggestion by no means...
To take them down, yeah. It didn't make sense.
Was that anything that came from us or the parks?
Oh, that was definitely not, definitely not. I'm definitely not an advocate of yielding ground in that manner. One of the things is, is that in my experience in Chicago, is losing a park is basically a deal-breaker, because the public loses faith in the police, and we catch the dickens of a time trying to reclaim a park after we've abdicated ground that way, so.
I hear you. The park was well-attended this weekend. I know for sure.
Yeah, last Tuesday, I got called up for a softball game at 9:30 at night, and we had two police officers right there, so the presence is always there, basically.
I think the guys are starting to like it, and I think the public is starting to like and accept the fact that it doesn't mean that there's a problem, it just means that we're making sure there is no problem. And so I think in that regard, it's working well.
Very good, very good.
And as I said, we always have room to improve.
And if you find someone that doesn't like to be... And if you find someone that doesn't like to be a good person over there, you just make sure they don't come to the park anymore.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Strongly encourage that.
You strongly encourage that. Thank you.
Mayor, also Scott has a couple of things. And one of the things, he has a couple on his list, but I've asked him to just do a quick update for residents on what our mosquito program is. We kind of give a little bit of an introduction that every year, especially this time, it's not, hasn't been bad yet, but it'll be coming soon. So I thought it'd be helpful again for residents to understand.
They're out there already.
They're out there.
They're out there already. I was killing a few last night, yep.
Yep. And now that people are going out a little more, and we've had a few rains and also some dry weather, you will start to see the mosquitoes a little bit more. We contract with Clark Mosquito Control, which is the largest mosquito control company in the area. And our, the way that we attack mosquitoes is we try to prevent them from becoming a nuisance in the first place. What that means is we treat our catch basins, our storm sewers, our large standing water areas and our ditches with a variety of different pellets and chemicals that keep mosquito larvae from being able to come out. Now, we do want to ask residents also, we want them to make sure that there's no tires outside and that they're cleaning their bird baths regularly because these small areas can really contribute to the mosquito population in the area. One thing that we've decided not to do is adulticide, which is you may see some vans in some communities out spraying a chemical into the air. We don't do this for a couple of reasons. The mosquito treatments that we provide are 95% effective, so they kill 95% of the mosquito larvae, whereas these vans and these adulticide chemicals kill under 10%. So what we're really trying to do is control the majority of the mosquito population before it gets to that type of a problem. We also just want to remind residents, if they are out, we do want them to continue to use sprays, mosquito candles, a lot of these different types of items. Mosquitoes can travel up to 10 miles, and not all entities do control their mosquitoes. So if you have an area like DuPage County Forest Preserve nearby that doesn't treat, you will still see some mosquitoes in the area. So we want all residents to be careful of that, especially with some negative consequences, West Nile as well as the nuisance out there, so.
Scott, in addition, I recall, though we haven't done it for many years, I don't actually, I don't remember if the city ever sprayed. They certainly hadn't since I was here.
Years ago, we used to spray.
But it's expensive now, too, some of the communities that have done that. Is it $10,000 a spray, maybe?
It's $8,000 per spray, and really, it's almost completely a visual, a comfort type thing. It's not effective.
Well, that's true. You hit on something that, you know, for people that have had experience with the trucks going around spraying, that's the first question they ask, why don't you do that anymore? It's only because they, that's what they experienced in the past. So now we know that there is much more effective ways. And frankly, for the health of our residents, it is even better not to have those trucks driving around spraying that, those chemicals.
Yes, you never know what the chemicals, five years down the line, what people can find out about those chemicals. Sometimes the cure is worse than the disease. So it's just difficult to say.
Okay.
Any other questions on that program? One other item I wanted to touch on was on the agenda under new business, our three agreements for wireless carriers to go onto our tower. These have come up fairly recently where the demand has increased dramatically. And for the tower on 1041 South Frontage Road, if these are approved, that'll be a total of six agreements and almost $300,000 per year in annual revenue that we've received over the last year and a half. Now, we've been reviewing these, and we require structural analysis done for each project on the tower to make sure that it's sufficient for these projects. Now, we are getting close to the point where it's close to 100% full. Now, there could be a couple of different things. There could be some different bracings or structures that could be put on that tower. But what we're looking to do now is investigate what can we do with that tower? Are there ways to stabilize the tower for additional carriers or projects? Or if not, if it would be possible to put other towers or other structures close by in that area to really maximize the value that we get from these because that $300,000 annually, and that also came with a total of $150,000 in capital contributions that can go toward things like projects, different city items that we could definitely use.
And Scott, in some cases, if you can consolidate the area of the towers, it keeps them out of other residential neighborhoods or other places. So if by chance you could find a remote area, so, you know, so Scott and I had talked about that, and we're just going to do some preliminary review and make a report either at a goal-setting session or something for the city council, just to see if there is any feasibility for additional towers in that general area.
Okay. That tower is on our Public Works property on the South Frontage Road, so it is, it's not affecting residents.
It's in a good location, right by Argon and the Forest Preserve and very few residential homes in that area.
Anything else, Scott? That's it. Thank you very much. Let's move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 121323 in the amount of $338,859.31 from the listed funds. No payroll because this is the warrant for the last fiscal year, and the same total will be approved of $338,859.31.
Do I have a motion to approve that warrant? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions for the treasurer? The roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Five ayes, two absent. The warrant's approved. The next warrant, please.
Okay. Warrant number 131402, which is for the current fiscal year, requesting council's approval of, in the amount of $465,868.96 from the enumerated funds, as well as payroll for the period ended May 2nd, 2013, amount of $233,536.14, for a total will be approved of $699,405.10.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments for the treasurer? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. That warrant has been approved. Did you want to go over the monthly report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly report and also the year-end report for the period ended April 30th, 2013. Just for the audience's knowledge, April 30th is the end of our fiscal year. So while these numbers I'm reading are the numbers currently reflected, there are still some adjustments that may be necessary after our auditors finally review the numbers, as well as some pending bills that still may be outstanding related to the last fiscal year, which may impact these. But as of the present time, the general fund reflects year-to-date revenue of $13,719,369, expenditures of $10,61,521, for a current balance of $4,966,373. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of $4,911,092, expenditures $5,628,058, for a current balance of $161,189. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue $642,968, expenditures $531,541, for a current balance of $321,250. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue $508,652, expenditures of $21,907, for a current balance $763,019. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue $590,331, expenditures of $355,879, for a current balance of $3,899,160. And the capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue $498,028, expenditures $494,375, for a current balance $7,860.
Any questions for the treasurer on the report? Then let's move on. Thanks, treasurer. Corinne, standing committee reports. Do any of the chairman have reports? Alderman, Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The municipal services committee tonight approved the minutes of the April 22nd, 2013 minutes. We're still going to be obtaining several signatures on that from Alderman who were on that committee. And the next meeting is scheduled for June 24th, 2013.
What date was that, again?
June 24th, 2013.
Okay. All right. And Alderman Shower?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be 6:00 PM on Monday, June 3rd, in our upstairs meeting room, pending any agenda items. Going forward, our meeting will be held at 6:00 PM the first Monday of every month before city council due to some Alderman scheduling situations.
Yeah, it fits better.
Exactly.
Yes, thank you. Let's move on to questions and comments, agenda-related. Do any of the Alderman have questions, comments on items that are on the agenda this evening? Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments for items on the agenda this evening? Let's move on to old business, and there being no old business, and the consent agenda is next, and there are no items on the consent agenda, let's move right to new business. The first item under new business is a consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for Dive Heart. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belke, seconded by Alderman Marques, discussion. Dive Heart is an organization dedicated to helping individuals, children, adults, veterans with disabilities, and they are having a fundraiser, a split-the-pot drawing on, they're going to be having a continuing split-the-pot drawings through the summertime at Q Bar for cruise nights. That's what Dive Heart is all about, in case anyone didn't know. The roll, please. Belke?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
I'm staying.
Shower?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstention and two absent. The motion is approved. Next item under new business is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with world-class wireless LLC to supply space on our water tower at 1041 South Frontage Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. This agreement is set up a little bit different than previous ones. I think on this one, it's a bulk payment of the annual contribution, correct?
Yes, the other agreements are $4,000 a month.
A month, yes.
This specific company was just set up a little differently in that they prefer to do one annual payment to avoid the hassle of doing that on a monthly basis.
I see, okay.
So it is the same.
Yeah, I just noticed that that was a major difference compared to the other contracts. Any other discussion on this? Then the roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. Item C under new business is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter an agreement with General Communications to supply space on our water, our tower at 1041 South Frontage Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion? Again, this is another one that they're paying the bulk, isn't it? Or is this the $4,000?
No, this one is.
This is back to the original?
This one is two different projects at the $4,000, so it's $8,000 total per month, but with two different clients, both through General Communications.
Okay.
But it is a monthly fee.
All righty. The roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. Motion is approved. The next is a motion acknowledging a settlement agreement with J.C. Cuts on a lawsuit filed against them for back rent and maintenance. Do I have a motion to approve? Belke, seconded by Alderman Marques, discussion? The roll, please. Belke?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. It's getting easier with all the different names, huh?
That's why I have papers.
The next item on the, is a motion to approve an engineering agreement with V3 Engineering for the replacement of a water main on Cass Avenue and Plainfield Road. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques and Alderman Shower. This is work that's going to be done in the future, in the near future, when we do the improvements to 75th Street and Cass Avenue. It will go in conjunction with those improvements. This is not something we're going to start digging up the street right away. It's going forward.
Mayor, if I just can add, this was one of those, I guess is an opportunity, this is actually the engineer for DuPage County who's overseeing the project. So Dan, in meeting with the county, thought it was a good idea to have the same engineer to avoid conflicts and differences. So again, we were able to work with the county on this kind of a joint engineering. So I thought that was a very good idea, and Dan, for Dan to bring this forward.
Now, V3 will be supervising this project? Or will we still be supervising the project?
We'll still have the oversight since we are the responsible party for the water. We're not sure who to consult this is going to be, that's going to be overseeing if this project goes in FY '15.
So they may have, this is the design engineer, they may have a different inspection engineer once the project comes.
Okay. Okay. You gave me Marques and Shower. Okay, if there's no other discussion, the roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. Item F under new business is a motion to approve a resolution approving a change order from McCann Industries in the amount of $8,000 for one boom-flail mower. Do I have a motion to approve? Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. At our last meeting, we approved the mower, the demo mower, and we discovered that the attachment, this boom-flail, we called it just a flail mower, when we voted on this at our last meeting, only to discover that it was a different item that had to be added to this mower. So that was the reason why we had to do this and spend an additional $8,000.
Mayor, also, in the packet, if residents are wanting to view it, it actually shows the picture of the different equipment. And actually, you know, with the boom, it is really a huge difference in our ability to move along these rightways or ditches much faster. So obviously, this is a critical piece of equipment.
Yeah. We have a motion, a second. Okay, then the roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent. The motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments and announcements of a general nature. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe most of you might have received the email, and if you haven't, the Darien Lions Club, Mark Lewis is the chairman of the July 4th Parade Committee. And I believe that Mark sent out an email to all current, I know if Mr. Kenny or Belzak received it, Tom might have because he is a Lions Club member, but that's a form that we fill out, and you're allowed to put a script in there in terms of what you want read when your vehicle goes past the parade central, you know, the tent. Again, I don't know if you received it. If you haven't, Mark Lewis is the gentleman who we need to contact. If you don't know how to contact him, let me know, and I'll let him know what your email address is so we can send it to you. If you did get it, download it, fill it out, complete it, and then email it back to him. If you did get it, download it, fill it out, complete it, and then email it back to him. And then you have to also sign the rules and regulations with regard to the 4th of July Parade and mail that to him.
I did receive that email, and I will do that.
It's getting complicated, Joe.
Yeah, it is.
I know. It used to be that, yeah, whatever I said before, do that again.
Yeah.
It's not like that anymore.
Didn't realize it was mandatory. I do now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I probably should have asked Dan this before, but I'm still getting a lot of questions, I'm sure we all are, with respect to the opening of Chuck's Southern Comforts. Again, for the benefit of the viewing audience, can you give an update on that, Dan?
Last I heard, was supposed to be by the end of the month. This week, the sign is going to be going up. Landscaping is in progress. They're painting the outside of facilities today, as a matter of fact, they started there. The inside is 90% complete.